I would like to call this Village Board meeting of Thursday, September 4th, 2025, to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Absolutely. Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light? Trustee Meritato?
Here.
Trustee Matrasco?
Here.
Trustee Beacon?
Here.
Madam President Giannelli?
Here. Tonight, the Glendale North Influencers Club will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Club, you want to join us up here?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, influencers. If you could, just like we discussed, I'd love to hear your name. If you could, share your name and what year you are at Glendale North.
My name is Kayla Ah, and I'm a junior.
My name's Andre Diaz, and I'm a junior.
My name is Adriana Diaz Cease, and I'm a junior.
My name is Gianna Gelto, and I'm a senior.
My name is Ava Moreno, and I'm a junior.
My name is Meadow Robles, and I'm a junior.
My name is Kayla Sathna, and I'm a junior.
My name is Adrian Staffa, and I'm a junior.
My name is Ella Clementwick, and I'm a junior.
My name's Haley Dove, and I'm a junior.
My name's Leona Haley, and I'm a freshman.
My name's Cam Williams, and I'm a freshman.
My name's Olivia Polina, and I'm a junior.
My name's Emma Malka, and I'm a senior.
My name's Brooke Macklewitz, and I'm a senior.
My name is Bridget Swiner, I'm a junior.
Wonderful. Bravo, everybody. Yeah.
And my name is David Hennessy. The kids call me D. Hen, and I am the sponsor at Glendale North of this club.
So just to share a little bit about our Glendale North Influencers, this club was started in 2020 to 2021 when students were remote and hybrid as a way to engage with the students and their peers. The goal is to make school an exciting place where students want to be and to ensure that all the different activities at school were equally represented. They create content for school promotions, help promote school spirit activities, they plan for pep rallies, weekly news show, they have food reviews, including the crumble in Glendale Heights. They have game shows and more. And I want to call out, they were a critical part of our safety campaign that we launched. Recently, Glendale Heights, the Glendale North Influencers joined the action, they took the pledge, and they created content that they shared promoting safety in our Glendale Heights streets. So, thank you, students. Thank you to the adults in the room who make sure that this is something that our students can participate with and for all you do. One more quick fact. Statistics across their social media platforms, two Instagram accounts, one TikTok, one YouTube page. They average about 1.5 million views a month across all those platforms. They post 3,000 times a year, and they've been featured on ESPN, House of Highlights, and CBS Max props. So thank you. And I know we did a shout out earlier, we chatted about who is hometown Carol Stream. Raise your hands. Thank you, Carol Stream, for showing off who are hometown Glendale Heights students. Thank you to all of you for being here. We appreciate it.
And then Mayor, can we do a quick, funny, quick picture?
Oh, yeah, please. Please. Gotta do it for the ground.
We're gonna post it.
You guys did so good. Yeah, good job.
Everybody, everyone, one, two, three. Hold that. I need a couple more. One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you, everyone. I would like to recognize, we move now on to petitions and communications. Board reports. Trustee Beacon?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, and thank you for joining us today. For those who are watching at home and for those that are here today, I will make my board report very short. First off, there were a couple of resident complaints. I went to the Historic House Ice Cream Social, and I had the opportunity to be at the Filipino event that just passed recently here over the weekend. And that's pretty much it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Matrasco?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. So, a short report, of course, but just a couple shout outs. The Citizen Police Academy, amazing. If you haven't had an opportunity and you want to know anything about what our police go through, what they do, they just scratch the surface. It's actually pretty refreshing to hear from them and how, what they enjoy and all. Golf outing, I can't say enough about that. I actually got a golf lesson. I don't play golf. I actually learned. And I have to give Jennifer and Cory a lot of shout outs because I actually made connection with the ball. Went to my first HOA meeting. Everyone in five, if you have HOA meetings, I would love to come and visit. I'd love to be able to get, have people know who I am. You have any questions, please let me know. Couple of questions that came my way. It's great to hear what everyone has to, questions they have. So anything you have, definitely bring it my way. One shout out, we have Seams Park on Monday. We're having our party in the park. So if anybody is around Seams Park, come on out. I think it's 5:00 to...
5:00 to 6:30.
I think it's coming later too, but just a shout out. I'll be there.
Thank you, trustee. Deputy Mayor?
I have a report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Clerk Darlene?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the golf outing as well. It was outstanding. I hope next year that we get more people to that. I never attended it in all the years, always, always thought it was insanity that we did that. And I cannot tell you enough what a remarkable program that is. I attended the municipal clerks meeting last night. That was very informative. I also attended Pakistani Day with the mayor over at DuPage County. And I want to say that I walk Camera Park every day. So anybody who needs a partner, I'm always here and available. But our park looks beautiful. I honestly, you guys should take the time to go out there and walk Camera Park. You will not be disappointed. That's all I got, Mayor.
Yeah. By the way, wasn't Camera Park in one of ours where we're like the top five or something?
Top seven.
Yeah, top seven. Yeah. That's pretty impressive.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes, I attended the property enhancement committee meeting, asked the negotiation sessions, and yes, the meeting last night.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Siddiqui?
I have no report, but I do have one question. What is our policy about the ICE being in the town? Since we are the, you know, there are a lot of immigrant community lives in, so what is our directions like? Do they inform us? Because they come with unmarked cars covering their faces. So how we know if it's ICE or is it, you know, they are attacking someone? So what is our directions for police and...
Through the Trust Act, we, in local enforcement state of Illinois, do not work with ICE. So we do not know when they're in town. We do not know, not when they're, we don't know when they're here to pick somebody up for immigration. We have no idea.
Okay.
So we usually find out, this, I did a presentation for Trust Act, and during the presentation, that's exactly what I said. We usually find out when the residents call us and tell us that somebody was there.
Okay. So how we recognize if it's not an abduction of it's ICE, you know, whatever they are doing, because they come in the unmarked cars, they cover their faces, and so that's, that's one of the questions which have been asked to me by one of the resident, that what is, you know, should we call the police or what is your village policies?
If you do, if you do not know, then you call the police, and there's nothing wrong with that's coming anyway. So if there's any question at all, call the local police department, whether it's Glendale Heights or any other agency. Just make sure you contact the police department, and then we'll figure it out from there. If the people don't know that it was ICE, maybe the neighbors would know too. So we can figure it out that way. And more than anything, we can get that family, if they were taken for immigration purposes for ICE, we can find, help them find the venue to go see where the family members are taken to.
Okay, so we, so we know if, let's say if someone has been taken by the ICE, and that the family member contacted the police, they can help them and telling them if it's...
We, we work with enough, enough social service programs-
Okay.
-that we can refer them to those social service programs, and they can assist them with that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Community, I have two updates for you from my desk. I just want to start by saying thank you to all of you who joined us at the golf charity classic. Thank you to our golf course and catering teams who helped put together a really important and incredible day. Besides the money that was raised for really needy philanthropic groups, charities, there was just definitely a spirit of positivity and the community coming together and kind of rallying around our, our people in need, our families, our students, our seniors, our communities. So I just want to say thank you to everybody for that. I also want to just give a nod of kudos to our school districts, School District 87, School District 41, School District 15, and 16. Great start to the school year. Thank you for our crossing guards who are helping make sure our kids are getting to class, to school safely, to our police department for keeping our streets safe, but also for everyone who's taken the pledge to join our TEAL dot campaign and be a part of the solution here to keep our community safe. Just want to say thank you. Community announcements. Mr. Flynn?
Thank you, Mayor. Coffee and chat with the village president and board. Next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be this Saturday, September 6th, at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you're unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302, or contact your local district trustee. For those of Glendale Heights who are looking for qualified individuals to get involved by applying for a village committee or commission, current openings include property enhancement committee, ordinance committee, which is being filled tonight, emergency ESDA, planning zoning being filled tonight, police pension board is being filled tonight. These vital positions will help shape the future of the village. To submit an interest form, applications are available myself, or village president Giannelli, or you can download the form on the village's website at www.glandalehighes.org.
Thank you. Director of Community Development, Jason Anker?
Join the Village of Glendale Heights and the senior citizen community for the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens Open House. On Wednesday, September 10th, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., we will be hosting an open house with the ribbon cutting ceremony at 6:00 p.m. to celebrate National Senior Center Month and showcase the recent construction upgrades to the center. We will feature a walk down memory lane with pictures from the original groundbreaking and ribbon cutting ceremonies, demonstrations of programs at the center, and more. For more information, please contact the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens at 630-260-6050.
Thank you. Chief Pathus?
The Village of Glendale Heights, Glendale Heights Police Department, and our local school districts are teaming up to encourage everyone to take the TEAL dot pledge for safe driving. School is now back in session for all Glendale Heights kids, and we encourage drivers to put their phones down, keep their eyes on the road, slow down, and drive like your child lives here. TEAL dot stickers are available at all village facilities, our school resource officers, and with our crossing guards. We encourage you to take these vinyl stickers and put them in the corner of your back window of your car, the front window of your homes, or places of business as a reminder to drive safely. And remember, these are our roads, not racetracks. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighes.org/TEAL. And movie with the cop. Our final movie with the cop night is Friday, September 12th, starting at 6:30 p.m. Please note, the new location will be at the Sports Hub. We will be showing everyone's favorite classic 80s movie, The Goonies. This event is free and sponsored by the Glenside Public Library and Kiwanis Club of Glendale Heights. Snacks and refreshments will also be available. So grab your warm blankets and head over to the Sports Hub for our final movie night with the cop of the season. For more information, please contact Tanya Mako at 630-909-5459.
Thank you, chief. Director of Leisure Services, Keith Knouts?
Thank you, Mayor. Cops and Bobbers Fishing Derby. Come out to Heritage Park for some fishing fun on Saturday, September 27th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at the annual Cops and Bobbers Fishing Derby in conjunction with Harvest Fest, hosted by the Village of Glendale Heights and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 52. Try your luck at catching some of the trophy fish like catfish, bluegill, and bass that live in Lake Becerra. Registration begins at 9:00 a.m. and the derby begins promptly at 9:30. We will conclude the fishing derby with a trophy presentation and prizes. The fishing derby is a catch and release event. For more information, please contact Jessica at 630-909-5123. And as we already mentioned, celebrate the fall season at Heritage Park on Saturday, September 27th, following the fishing derby, from noon to 4:00 p.m. at the annual Harvest Fest. Welcome autumn's arrival with music, crafts, hayrides, chili cookoff, bags tournament, food and drinks, games, and much more. This fall event is fun for the entire family with activities for everyone. For more information, please contact Jessica at 909-5123.
Thank you, Keith. Dr. Public Works, Jeff McComber?
Thank you, Mayor. The Village of Glendale Heights is gearing up for the annual Show and Shine Car Show Swap Meet at Camera Park on Sunday, September 21st, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. There will be 18 classes of vehicles on display, along with a swap meet, food, music, and more. If you are interested in registering a vehicle or signing up to be a swap meet vendor or crafter, please visit www.glandalehighes.org backslash car show to download a registration form. For more information, please contact trustee Michael Light at 630-909-5308, or Jessica at 630-909-5123.
Thank you. Human Resources Manager, Peter Cahill?
The Glendale Heights Police Department is now hiring new police officers. Applications are due by Thursday, September 11th. Join a team of hardworking individuals who have dedicated their careers protecting and serving the residents of Glendale Heights while staying true to community-oriented policing. For applications or for more information, please visit www.joinghpd.org or contact the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070.
Thank you. Purchase Engagent, Darcy Garzal?
Thank you, Mayor. The Village of Glendale Heights remembers Patriot Day on Thursday, September 11th, with a silent parade of first responder vehicles, followed by a candlelight service at 7:15 p.m. on the front steps of Village Hall. Please join the Village of Glendale Heights and the Glendale Heights community as we come together for a moment of silence and reflection on Patriot Day. Never forget those we lost on September 11th, 2001. For more information, please call Jessica at 630-909-5123.
Thank you. Finance Director, Andrea Cravens?
Thank you, Mayor. Join us at Veterans Memorial Park every Thursday for the Glendale Heights seasonal market. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. If you would like to be a vendor or for more information, please contact Tanya Mako at 630-909-5459. And mark your calendars. The annual Family Health and Safety Fair will be Wednesday, October 1st, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Sports Hub. There will be free activities and stations for everyone, including the Teddy Bear Clinic, flu shots if you're 18 years or older, health screenings, child ID cards, and more. For more information, please contact Jessica at 630-909-5123.
Thank you. Moving on to proclamations. I have a proclamation to proclaim the month of September as National Senior Center Month, a proclamation to proclaim the month of September as National Preparateness Month, proclamation to proclaim the month of September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, proclamation to proclaim the month of September as Thyroid Cancer Awareness Month, proclamation to proclaim the week of September 15th to October 15th, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month, proclamation to proclaim the week of September 17th through 20, excuse me, September 17th through the 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week. And if there are no objections, Board, I will sign these proclamations.
I didn't forget about the number five.
Did I skip that?
National Suicide and...
No, I certainly skipped that.
Oh, you, oh, sorry.
No, thank you. And in that vein, we have a presentation today by Hope for the Day. We were scheduled to. Unfortunately, the presenter is not able to be here tonight. We will be rescheduling that presentation for another meeting.
October 2nd. We confirm within October 2nd.
Oh, wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Moving on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only?
Hi, Ed Popey Avenue. Like you don't know. I just want to thank you guys for leaving. You added thyroid cancer awareness a year or two ago. I'm going in my third year of surviving as a thyroid survivor, and I really appreciate you guys having the proclamation. If I could just tell you really quickly, I know it's short, but 44,000 people will be diagnosed with thyroid cancer this year. 2,290 of them will die because they didn't get diagnosed. You can go to americanassociationofcancerresearch.org. They'll teach you how. It's very simple to learn how to self-palpate your thyroid. If it feels funny, if something's not right, go get it checked out. I thought I had a sinus infection and I had thyroid cancer. So thank you for leaving that on there. And the key for thyroid awareness is keeping it out there and keeping people talking about it. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You have the consent agenda before you. Would Village Administrator Doug Flint please read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of August 21st, 2025. Two, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of August 21st, 2025. Three, approval of the August 29th, 2025 payroll and the accounts payable listing of September 4th, 2025. Total amount, $3,823,578.01. Four, an ordinance to amend Chapter 8 entitled Traffic Schedules of Title 7 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Parking restrictions on Lake Ridge Drive. Five, resolution to approve and authorize the execution of agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the furnishing and professional design engineering services for the Highland Avenue Reconstruction and Water Main Replacement Project. Six, a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract extension with FCL Graphics for the 2026 Recreation Activity Guide for the Village of Glendale Heights. Seven, a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract extension with Hague Press for the 2026 Community Newsletter and Senior Activity Guide for the Village of Glendale Heights. Eight, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement between the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois and Concentric Integration LLC for the furnishing of professional engineering services for the FY 2026 Utilities and Wastewater Treatment Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition SCADA Systems Improvement Project. Nine, approval of pay request number 18 to bother Construction Company for the water supply facilities rehabilitation, total amount not to exceed $14,418. Ten is approval of consent items.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, trustee Schmidt.
Yes, I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Beacon. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. Old business? There is none. New business? A motion to waive first reading on new business item number two. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item number two?
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Siddiqui.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Matrasco. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion to waive first reading on new business item number two is approved. Number two, an ordinance to rezone the property commonly known as 409 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, from the August 21st, 2025 Cow Committee of the Whole. First reading is waived. This is ordinance 2025-41. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-41? Thank you, trustee Meritato?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Schmidt, for the second. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2025-41 is approved. Item three, an ordinance to amend Chapter 10 entitled Bicycles of Title 7 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Low-speed electric bicycles and low-speed gas bicycles from the August 21st, 2025 Committee of the Whole. This is the first reading. Item four, an ordinance to amend Section 7-6-4 entitled Toy Vehicles and Section 7-6-5 entitled Riding Outside of, Clinging to Vehicles of Chapter 6 entitled Driving Rules of Title 7 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Personal Mobility Devices and Low-Speed Electric Scooters from the August 21st, 2025 Committee of the Whole. This is the first reading. Item five, a resolution appointing Silviano Gomez as a police commissioner to the Board of Police Commissioners for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is Resolution 2025-R-101. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-101? Thank you, trustee Schmidt.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, trustee Siddiqui. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
The motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-101 is approved. A resolution appointing members to the Police Pension Fund Board of Trustees for the Village of Glendale Heights. This is Resolution 2025-R-102. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-102?
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Siddiqui.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Meritato. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-102 is approved. Item seven, a resolution appointing Planning and Zoning Commissioners to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is Resolution 2025-R-103. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-103? Thank you, trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Matrasco. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-103 is approved. Item eight, a resolution appointing members to the ordinance committee for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is Resolution 2025-R-104. Is there...
Can we, Mayor, can we table this for the next board meeting since trustee Light is not here, and I saw his email. You want to also discuss this, but since he's on vacation. So can we table this for the next board meeting?
So there's a motion to table on the floor. There would be, need to be a second to move forward with the motion to table.
Any motion for a second, or any second for the motion board?
Being no second, the motion fails.
Okay.
I'm just going to reread it, yeah. Item eight, a resolution appointing members to the ordinance committee for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is Resolution 2025-R-104. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-104?
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Matrasco. Thank you, trustee Beacon. Any discussion, Board? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Beacon?
Yes.
Trustee Matrasco?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
No.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to adopt Resolution 2025-R-104 is approved. Public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the... Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only?
Hi, I'm not sure if this is exactly the right time, but, yeah, my name is Kelly, live in Glendale Heights, on Gilberto. I would just like to compliment the whole, all of you up there. And with this consent agenda D, you make it a lot easier to understand what you're actually doing with Robert's Rules of Order, and I really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Also, a brief note of gratitude to all of our committee members and commission members who came out tonight. We appreciate you volunteering and giving your time and service to the Village of Glendale Heights. I look forward to the work that will be in front of you and the work that we'll do together on behalf of our community. So, thank you all. For those of you who I haven't had a chance to met yet or just spoke with today, again, I appreciate you and I think I speak on behalf of the Board that we're looking forward to your service. So, thank you. Executive session, there is none. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Trustee Schmidt.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Beacon, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, meeting is adjourned. Trustee Matrasco, you have the Committee of the Whole. I would like to call this Committee of the Whole Thursday, September fourth, two thousand and twenty-five to order. Will the clerk, clerk, please note who is present?
So noted.
Does anyone have any additions or deletions?
I do. Student use leadership slash junior committee persons. Okay, and you also?
Police Department and Construction, two.
Okay, anything else? All right. All right, committee reports. Glendale Lakes Golf Club Committee.
That would be me. I would like to take the opportunity to thank everyone that came out for the two thousand and twenty-five charity golf class the last Wednesday. The weather was great, the golf was great, the food was great. And I heard that the clinic were great also, which I didn't, I didn't participate in, I didn't, I didn't see, is that the one you played in?
Mm-hmm, yeah. I did hit the ball.
We were able to raise over twenty thousand dollars at this event, and I look forward to the next meeting when we will present the final total and check to each of deserving organizations. Thank you, Glendale Heights, for making this day such a great success. And I just being chairman of that committee, I want to say thank you for all the volunteers, Glendale Lakes, all our sponsors. And I'm gonna have to say kudos to Sunrise Chevrolet because they, they spent a lot of money for this event and they're really, really good neighbors. And anybody looking for a new car?
Shop.
I gotta take a plug, you know, I gotta give them a little plug. Okay, thank you.
Commercial break is over. Okay, Historical Committee, I know Mike, Mr. Light is not here. Does anybody have anything else for Historical Committee?
One thing, I did, I was there for the Historic Committee Ice Cream Social, it was great. A lot of ice cream for the kids.
Okay, Ordinance Committee?
No report.
Parks and Recs?
Just be mine. There's no report, but we will have, we will be having, our next meeting will be September sixteenth at seven o'clock at this voice hub. And I got some new ideas, I'm gonna run past the committee and see how far we go with that. Thank you.
Okay, Property Enhancement Committee?
This month, I should say, last month, was the Quarterly Managers and Manlords Meeting. We had a presentation by Rachel Fabiani, the Lead Code Enforcement Officer, concerning property maintenance codes enforcement and the investigation procedure when complaints are raised. Very interesting, she did a fantastic job. Kudos to her, thank you.
Okay, Senior Citizen Advisory Committee?
That'd be me for now, for temporarily, anyway. The Senior Advisory Committee met last week and meeting would focus on finishing planning for the open house ribbon cutting that will be taking place next Wednesday, September tenth, at the Senior Center. The theme for this year of Senior Month is Flip the Script. And we have tied that into this open house ribbon cutting by having an event for all ages to stop by and check out what the Senior Center offers to the community. We will be having building tours, including addition that we recently completed. Has well has different Senior Center staff and advisory committee members in the rooms to explain a little bit about what the center is used for a daily basis. There will be also light appetizers available during the open house. This is a great opportunity for non-seniors and seniors that have never been to the Senior Center to stop by and check things out. At six P.M., we will be doing the ribbon cutting. They will tie together the project that was completed earlier this year as well as the naming of the Senior Center to the Linda Jackson Senior, the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens. Stop by and join us in the celebration, the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizen from five P.M. to seven P.M. on September tenth.
Is your tongue nice, T?
Thank you. I'm okay now.
You sure, okay, just making sure.
You wanna say that one more time?
Yeah.
Okay. Other topics, then let's move on to our other. Mayor, you had for student use leadership?
Yeah, so I had the opportunity yesterday to meet with members of DuCap. DuCap is a local organization that is critical in connecting our youth and our students with opportunities to, just, I would, I would even just say towards wellness and towards, you know, opportunities in general. But we came together, discussed this concept I had heard of at the state level. Our state rep, Diane Blair Sherlock, had told me that they have junior committee person. So, I really wanted to hear more about that, what does that mean? I did also have a quick touch point with Peter from our legal team just to hear from his perspective, had he heard this, you know, what, what does it mean to be a junior committee person? And so, essentially, we came together with DuCap and I kind of tossed his idea out there of, could we look at the opportunity to do a couple of things? First, bring together Glendale Heights youth, and, and this is all very new board, so nothing, I'm married to nothing, it's all an idea, but think freshmen of high school through maybe seniors of college aged, Glendale Heights kids, invite them for a youth leadership summit, maybe early next year at some point. And then just look for ways that we could engage our youth from civics to philanthropy to just getting involved, to engagement, getting feedback from our, the youth of Glendale Heights. From there, gauge, gauge interest and potentially stand up junior kind of student leaders for three of our committees. So specifically, right now, we're considering the Plan Commission, Ordinance Commission, and Parks and Recreation. Again, all conceptual, this is a brand-new idea, but the thought is, how do we engage the youth? How do we make government and the work of a, of a community something that they want to be interested in? To kind of bring forward that next generation of people to be involved. So, maybe one or two students on those three committees, they wouldn't have a vote. They wouldn't, you know, be able to pass a vote, but they would have a voice and a discussion. They could sit at the table, discuss agenda items, give their feedback from their lens. Again, we have to really bake out what that means, make sure it's very clear from a legal standpoint that it's, you know, compliant, of course. But I really loved DuCap's energy around it, they have a lot of great ideas on how they would socialize that, how they would find these, these kids who are looking for ways to get involved, but they don't know how. And, and we as a board could then engage our community in a new way. So, I guess what I'm asking you to do is just think about this, think about it from a leadership project standpoint. It's very new, but I do think that it would be something that over the course of the next year would really be value, a value add to our community and to our students and how we engage them. Because Glendale Heights, I think we recognize that's a gap for us today. Any thoughts?
It's always great to get our youth involved.
Yes.
We gotta start young. Someone's gotta lead us eventually, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly, okay. Good, well, I'm hoping that we can kind of continue to work towards this and define what it really means. But I just wanted to introduce the, the subject to you and give you a chance to kind of think about it. Thank you.
Okay. And you had police and construction.
Okay, George, I got a question for you. I had coffee with a couple of residents. You know them, them circles, the T dots?
T dot.
Okay. He was, they were telling me that they worked fine inside the car, but a lot of these SUVs have tinted windows and they can't put them, nobody could see them. You think that we can, i- is there a way we can possibly get some of the other ones where if somebody had tinted windows, they could, they could come in and pick them up?
I'll, I'll work with David and we'll figure something out.
Like magnetic?
No, I mean, like we have inside, but put them on the outside. I guess these don't work on the, only work on the inside.
Yeah, cause other, yeah, we have to reverse the sticker.
Reverse it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To put it on the outside?
We can figure it out, yeah, these are static ones, I think they'll come off with the rain. But we'll figure out, we'll figure out a way we can, like, get more of a sticker portion to it, so we'll get it figured out.
Terrific, fine, thank you.
Are you looking for a flag or something?
Well, no, they were just curious because they can't, they can't see when, oh, you're being funny, right? I, I got you now.
Okay, anyone have anything else?
Your construction.
One more.
Construction? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that was all the same.
Just these contractors are doing an outstanding job in town.
Thank you.
I mean, they, they paid with English today, reached by me, and I tell you, they're, they're just moving, so.
We've been pleasantly surprised, because it's a new contractor, as you're probably aware, we had Johnson for all those years and.
Yeah, I had two complaints on the, so far. You have, you have, you have any complaints, anybody call?
Uh, there's been a couple.
Has there?
Yep, yep.
Okay, I'm going to get to Golden.
Okay.
That's gonna be. Okay, thank you.
Okay, public comments. Kimberly, Alman? I've got Kimberly, maybe it's not Kimberly. Were you the one, are you in reference to cleaning the green area and trees?
No, ma'am.
Oh, do we have Kimberly here? No? Okay, anybody else? Just give us your name and your address.
Sure. Thank you, my name is Sam Menton, I live at one forty-six Warren Avenue, Bloomingdale, Illinois. On five nineteen, my wife was given a citation by going through a red light camera at Glen Allen and North Avenue, one forty-two in the afternoon, P.M. So, we get the citation in the mail. I called for the Glendale Heights red light camera. But it's not Glendale Heights, it's red light camera. So, I talked to a lady, I asked her about the citation, she says to me, yes, to get the citation, da-da-da-da-da. I said, well, when I go to court or come here for hearing, will I be given the calibration of the camera, the speed of the camera, the rotation of the camera, and when it was last serviced? She said, yes, you will, that is supposed to be given to you. Okay, so, I come here to Glendale Heights, I file an appeal. I'm going to now mail, it's mailed in, I'm gonna get it my date. I came here on eight twenty-one at one P.M. Prompt on time, I'm a hearing officer. I see all you people here that have nameplates. If I was to address this gentleman, or you, the mayor, or you, the lawyer, okay, for the town? He's using your name in front of him. I don't know who he is, I'm thinking he's the lawyer of the town, he's a hearing officer. Well, he finds me guilty. So, I ask him, when we're looking at all the camera acts and that type of thing, I said, where's the calibration that I'm supposed to be giving? Uh, we don't have that. The clerk that sat next to him, we don't have that. So, he says, I'll tell you what, I found you guilty, you will pay a hundred dollars, but I have a solution for you. What's the solution? You can go to DuPage County and file an appeal. So, what do I do? The next day, I go right to DuPage County, go to the clerks of the Circuit Court. What do you think she tells me? You file the appeal, it's gonna cost you three hundred and forty-eight dollars. Hello, yes, hello, okay? So, I said, forget about it, it's a hundred dollars. So, if I'm found guilty for a hundred, then I'm gonna found guilty for three forty-eight. That's four forty-eight, it's outstanding robbery. I come back here, I go downstairs to where your police community board is there, women. I ask her, I said, hey, listen, do you have the calibration? Calibration, I, I'm not gonna give it to you. Why? Because I can't, I have to ask my boss. Who's your boss? I'll get to you, I'll get the boss. Give me your phone number. Very snide, very smart, and very sarcastic, okay? Now, I do find out from her that it's Mr. Grotto, that's the hearing officer. Why doesn't he have a nameplate in front of him? You go to a Circuit Court judge in the county of DuPage, there's a judge looking right at you, and there is his name. You people all have names. I don't understand. So, I'm, I'm, I'm really, I'm really frustrated. Now, I get a phone call from a watch commander with the Glendale Heights Police Department. He leaves this at the community service area there, where your police group is. I come and pick it up the next day. Well, remember what I told you? I told you my wife got the ticket in May. Well, he gives me, and I asked him for it, April and May. Right? The hearing was in August. Where is August? So, there's no, I mean, I have all the dates written down here. And what, and what I'm disappointed in is this here. First of all, I explained that, you know, there's been problems with red light camera. Old Brook got rid of it, I done argued with him. You have it, if you want it, it's yours, it's fine. It's not the question of the hundred dollars. Because if I'm found guilty, I'll pay the hundred dollars. And I promise you tomorrow afternoon, when I drop this hundred-dollar check off in the Village of Bloomingdale's mailbox there, you'll get your hundred dollars. But why was I not given the information on the cameras? And what is, what good is this? What good is this? This is from here, this is from April and May. Yes, 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 you know what? Excuse me for using the term. Any dummy from one of those companies can sit in his truck and mark whatever he wants, as long as you people get the hundred dollars. And as long as they get whatever cut they get. Miss Mayor, I'm upset, I don't believe I was, I was really guilty because I'll tell you what, and one last thing. I parked myself at that camera. And I'm gonna tell you something. You can park on the Merlin Muffler side, you can park at the Consolidated Tire side, you can park at the other side, which is on the southeast side, and you can park at Freddy's, the hamburger joint. And if you count one one thousand, two one thousand, three one thousand, guess what? It's different each hour of the day. Eight o'clock in the morning, noon time, four o'clock in the afternoon. And it doesn't make any difference how many cars are in the left turn lane in either direction that you go. So, I find it ridiculous. I don't know why you have it, maybe the chief here will tell you that it prevents accidents. It possibly does. But at least, a common person like myself, if my wife is guilty, she's guilty. I won't contend that she didn't go through it, if she went through it. But even when you go to court for anything, DuPage County, if you have your own court here, you're allowed information. If you have a dog that bites you here, you have information on an ordinance. If you park your car close to a fire hydrant, you have an ordinance. What's wrong with us here? Is it, is it that, is it that, uh, that confusing? That confusing? And you know, the last thing, I'll tell you this, I'm here for this hearing, there's probably half a dozen people here, right? So, I'm the first person that goes up, man wants to start, okay? No problem, ten to one. After he found me guilty, though I'm speaking for my wife, okay, looking at the camera and the rolling thing and everything else, okay? I didn't just leave, you know what I did? I didn't just leave. You know what I did? I went and sat down right there. And guess what? Nobody argued. The appeals, nobody argued. Nobody said a word. Huh, I'm afraid. Huh, I'm afraid. I'm afraid. Five hundred bucks to the village of Glendale Heights. Because nobody wanted to take the time out to go over and look at the camera and/or ask, could you provide me with calibration? I think that's, I think that's a fair thing for me. I think it's very fair. So I'm telling you, I love your town. I think you guys did a great job at a board meeting. I've never been here before. I appreciate talking to the chief and I appreciate this gentleman over here, uh, you know, coming up to me and asking me, is there anything I could do? But you know what? There's nothing you can do. I'm, I'm disappointed in Glendale Heights right now. I really am. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, may I see the, um, calibration document that you have?
My person?
Well, of course.
Sure. I didn't know if you were Mayor Danelli, or you were, uh, Jack Grotto, or who we are, you know what I mean?
No, certainly. I'm Rebecca.
There you go.
Thank you.
I'd like to have that back.
Just glancing at it.
Thank you. Here's the gentleman's, uh, Jack Grotto.
Okay, I see.
Here, I'm convinced to stay out of here.
No, sir. Thank you for, um, making sure that we were aware of this. I, this is not the experience that you deserve or your wife. And I think ultimately when we as a community consider, um, where and why we are tasking our, our commuters, right, folks who whether you live here or not and you're driving through, um, you know, asking them to be safe. I, I let, we started the meeting talking about safety. I talked about safety during my report. Uh, chief talked about safety today.
Sure.
Um, it's, it's currently something, sir, that Glendale Heights has at the very front of our kind of cortex, right? We're super focused on it right now. At the same time, when we talk about safety, we have to talk about, we have to talk about, uh, common sense. We have to talk about how we're making it, um, accessible to the people who drive through our town to keep them safe, but also to use common sense.
Sure.
So for me, this is the first I'm hearing about, um, this, this question of where do we have the calibrations available? So thank you for, I'm, I'm learning. Thank you for bringing something new. Um, though I am new as our son of the board, um, it's just always, I'm grateful when we hear these things. I am going to ask chief, is that something that we standardly have available?
Yeah, so the, the two people that were here, Mr. Grotto and the assistant that was here, they both have access to it. They just have not run it. They have the system that shows where it'll show live view of it and it'll show a, the, where the offense was previous. If you go to the live view, you can get the calibrations all the time.
Got it.
And that's what he was given.
Do you think that's something that we can provide some extra training and like support to them so that moving forward?
Yeah, Commander Voyer already talked to them about that.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Hey, just one more thing here too. I'm all for public safety, right?
Yeah.
Operating of motor vehicles is just, have a right.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not, you're not supposed to just get it. You're supposed to know how to operate. My wife's been married to me for four to six years. She's never had a traffic citation. We have state fund insurance. And I'll tell you a little something. When she came home and told me, I think I got pinched by the light. You know what that tells me? That tells me I got to give her a hundred dollars. I'd give her ten thousand dollars if it was anything else but a red light camera. But the thing is, the thing is, again, one last thing. Anytime you go to court, you're given evidence that you are at fault.
Yeah.
Complete evidence when you are found guilty. This piece of paper here doesn't give me anything that says I'm guilty. Yes, yes, yes. It's like telling me the dog's running down the street. I don't know where the dog's at, all right? The dog, the location. I'm just upset. I'm sorry if I've taken too much of your time.
No, I understand, but I appreciate it.
But, but you know what? It's a hundred dollars and it's a fact for fact. It's a fact for fact.
I understand. Thank you, sir.
Uh, I have a quick question. So did we install this camera, like we are the one who? Because this camera in my district also, a lot of people have, you know, complaints about that, you know, they also have that. So is this, are we the one who installed this or?
It's a Red Speed camera. He's correct. So the, it's a firm that does it. They, uh, camera itself finds violations. The violations come to the police department. The police department, sworn officer has to look at all the videos that come in. Around thirty-four percent of those, we accept as violation. That means that the other sixty-six percent are found not in violation. So there's no citation issued. So you have to have something that shows that it was an offense that was committed and then it gets sent out.
So my question is, how much time you are spending in, you know, analyzing those, of those officers' time versus getting, what kind of revenue we are getting on these?
I'm not sure on the revenue part. I have to look it up.
Okay.
But the, it's, they, it was put at north. So right now, we have to look at which e- intersections have the highest amount of accidents. Army Trail Bloomingdale by far has the highest amount of accidents. This, he said, it causes people to slow down. So when you have the red light cameras there, it reduces accidents. That is one of our biggest intersections that we have in town. So it does its part by reducing accidents there. And that's the, that's the reason that it was put in place.
Okay, so it's only for the right hand, correct? It's not for the yellow?
It's straight through. Yeah, straight through.
Straight through, if it's yellow and you cross that?
It's, no, it only does it on red. So
Okay.
It'll pick up and then it goes through a sworn officer to review it. Like I said, it's for, thirty-four percent of them are approved by a sworn officer.
And if I could add, the, the villagers program is in full compliance with state and federal law. Um, and there are, there is evidence. There's a video that the hearing officer looks at that determine. It's actually, you get more evidence than a speeding ticket because you get the actual violation that the hearing offer, officer looks at to determine whether or not there was a complete stop. Um, and a complete stop is not an amount of time, it's a complete cessation of movement. That's what the Illinois vehicle code defines a stop pass. And IDOT controls that intersection. So you also made comments about the timing of the lights. That's an IDOT intersection. IDOT controls the timing of the lights. You said at different points of the day.
I, I, I completely want to disagree with you. And we'll take too much more of your time, but I will tell you this. Red Speed will tell you. They control the timing on the red light camera.
On the camera, correct?
Yes. That is their camera in conjunction with that three light pedestal.
That's the villagers camera.
It works together. It works together.
But they don't control the lighting. They don't control how long green is. They don't control how long red is. They don't control how long yellow is. But it is coordinated because the camera works off the color of the light.
Well, it may, it may do that, sir. But I can tell you this. If six cars are lined up in that left turn lane at Glen Allen and North Avenue to go south or northbound, okay? Go to tomorrow. Watch six cars tomorrow morning at six thirty in the morning. That's a high volume of traffic time, okay? Then go watch it at twelve o'clock in the afternoon when there's one or two cars.
That's what I'm saying. That's an IDOT. If you think there's a problem with the timing of the lights, that's an IDOT issue.
Then why doesn't that, why does, why, why would the light then flash red at an interval time off the red light camera? Tell me that.
They're integrated.
No, they're not.
Yes, they are.
If they are, they're off.
I'm not arguing, sir. I, I'm just explaining that the villagers program is in full compliance with all the laws.
I'm just telling you that if you go there, I know there's a wrong. I'm not asking you to correct it. You're going to get your hundred dollars. But I'm going to tell you, before you pass judgment on me, you've got my name and you've got my phone numbers, if you possibly look it up, if you want to have your time. You look at the cameras. You look at the date of time. And also, I'll tell you another thing too. When it's very, very kind of a dismal day with the rain, like where the thunderstorms are coming in, things change. And when it's really, really sunny, really sunny, on like the ninety degree day, right after she received the citation, there is a problem. I'm just, I'm just letting you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anybody else? State your name and your address, please.
Ed Pope Wayne, Evan. Um, I just, chief, I wanted to, uh, take one second to put something in front of you guys, um, see if you'd consider this. Uh, Sergeant Hocko had the first Citizens Police Academy alumni class last week. Um, Kim and I went to it along with, you know, there was like twenty-five of us. It was fantastic. I can't tell you how good it was. Zach's presentation was great. Jen's presentation was outstanding. But what I learned was, um, they had these talks, so there's like video games that interact with the kids, okay? I don't know any, I didn't know anything about this. My grandson plays this game called Roblox all the time. And it turns out this is like one of the biggest pedophile things that there is. I knew nothing about it, okay? Nothing. Until I heard him talking to someone on his Roblox the other day and I'm like, what is going on? Jen's presentation on that was fantastic. He is, it's locked. It was one of his classmates from school. But she went through and told us how, when there are problems, um, that this is a huge problem and that they have to have these, what they call, safety talks with the parents when things come up in the households. So I said, well, what, you know, why don't we do that? He said, well, they kind of do it in the schools. I kind of think that's a little dis- disservice to the residents, okay? Now granted, I'm lucky. It's probably pretty unusual that, you know, I have a seven-year-old living with me. So, you know, I would, I would be far more disconnected if he didn't live with me. But he does live with me and I knew nothing about this. So I asked Sergeant Hocko, um, and I'm asking the board if you could consider this as well. We could, I think it would be way more advantageous for the village of Glendale Heights to put on a presentation, maybe right in here. Um, I think if you promoted the heck out of this, I think people would really show up for this. Because Kim was sitting right next to me. You could have knocked me over with a feather. I did not know anything about this stuff. It's terrifying, but it's better to know and learn than not know. And one of the ladies in the class disagreed. She's got a younger child. She thought the parents don't have the time for it. But I think it's, I think it's so important to make the time for it that if you promoted it, you know, through Tanya and other community outreach, whatever you do, I, I think it would be just such a beneficial program. It, it's great, the things that we're learning in CPA and, and it's awesome that Hocko has this, um, the alumni club going now. I, I mean, we're really getting a kick out of it and it's beneficial. But I can't get this safety thing out of my head. And, uh, I, I, I think it would be awesome if you guys would consider, you know, I know it couldn't happen right away, but if, if you could consider, um, putting one together for our re- all the residents, fifteen, sixteen, uh, what's yours, Kim, forty-seven?
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
Yeah.
And if we promoted that, I, I, you know, I really think people would come out for this. Because once you learn this much, which is what we learned from Jen, you want to know more because you want your kids to be safe. And it's, it's so creepy and so scary. We have to open up the parents' eyes to this. And they really did in our class. Now I'd like to take that and I think we should do it for as many people in the village as we can.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
The internet is one of the best inventions ever for finding things, building things, fixing things, whatever you want to do. Great for games too, but it's also one of the worst things ever invented because it's the easiest platform for predators to reach kids. And this is nothing new. When I was a school resource officer, there's a program, she, she does ICAC and that's the program that, um, Jennifer Rosario was, the detective does. It's for child pornography. There's a program called Kid Smarts offered there. And that's the program I used to teach at the school. There was also an adult program too, for the families. At that time, I offered it, nobody showed up. But that doesn't mean we can't offer it yet. So we have the Kid Smart program for the kids at the schools. And unfortunately, that's when we get the highest amount of disclosures of kids that were victims, is the month after that happens. That doesn't mean that we can't open up and try to get families in here again. We could try to offer it up. We have all the resources for it. We have all the training for it. It's just that we need to get people to come in and listen. And hopefully, we'll give it a try.
Well, one of the things I did mention to Sergeant Hocko too was, you know, you have such a huge alumni base now. I mean, just in, only not, a third of the people showed up for our first class. There was twenty-five of us. You should use us as ambassadors to go out and promote this. It doesn't just have to be your SROs trying to get some parents to show up, you know? We want to be ambassadors of goodwill for the police department and for the village of Glendale Heights. I, I'm telling you, I would go knocking doors with flyers to get people I knew that had kids to say, hey, you have to come to this. It, it, what she taught us, it, it was just amazing and eye-opening. And I mean, I just think everybody needs to find out this. Maybe they know it and maybe I'm that naive, but I don't, I didn't think I was until that night.
I don't think a lot of people do know this. I think you're correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, I agree.
And could I add to that? Ed, you forgot the dog we need.
The what? Oh, yeah, that's right. What is his name? Booth, Booth, Boone, something like that?
Owen?
No.
What's the dog's name?
No, no, they want that other dog.
He is, he is, he has a dog that only sniffs out electronics that pedophiles use to hide their, their pornography.
And we can get him for free, George.
And we could get him for three ninety-nine.
Free ninety-nine.
Free ninety-nine.
Okay.
And Jen could have her dog, which she wants.
How, how does it?
She's going to kill us. Thanks a lot.
Okay, okay. I'm intrigued. I'd like to know how a dog can sniff this out. So I think we need to talk.
Isn't that correct, chief? He, he, he.
All electronic media, not just certain pipes of electronics.
Well, ab- absolute, yes.
Yeah, but I still want to know.
The dog doesn't know the difference on what's on.
The dog does not know the difference. Correct.
I was going to say, I'm so changed. Thank you.
Okay, on the adjourned dog. Okay.
Yes.
I got, I got one more. Uh, Doug, when can we get this subcommittee for the, uh, for this ordinance?
The dog ordinance?
For the, uh, for CamDev.
Um, transfer stamp?
The transfer stamp?
Yes.
So we can, uh, set a meeting up for last week of September, first week of October, in between a board meeting week. So I'll get with you Monday. I'm off tomorrow. I'll give you the Monday and we'll set a date.
All right, sounds good. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else want to address the board? Yeah. Okay. All right, let's see. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.